Okay, so this is um. This was the contract for the nurses that was referred to committee?
Yes.
And um. Okay, so do we currently have any nurses working for us? I think at the meeting you said that we had none.
We do, but not in this part. Do we have a nurse supervisor until before she's not in this bargaining unit? But we don't have any nurses in this party.
Hey, what's up? We just started, sit here.
Good to see you. How you doing, Alan?
I'm well.
Yep.
I haven't seen Helen in a long time. I just want to say hello. Are they going good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Um, so we just started and he's discussing the process. Um, and I asked the question, do we currently have any nurses now in any of the positions? And we do or don't?
We do, we have it, we have a nurse that's a supervisor. She is not in the bargaining unit, but we do not have any nurses in the bargain.
Not in the bargaining unit?
Right, so when um several years back, more than several, we had about four nurses in the bargaining unit. And through attrition and retirements, um, that number has come down. And it's, and it came down to one in this last round of negotiations with us. We reached an agreement with her and her representative. And then right after we had reached the tentative agreement, shortly thereafter, she resigned. So we have a tentative agreement that the union has ratified being her. But we've not had a vote by the city council. So we're bringing to the city council, just so we're completing our obligations under Mass General Law, Chapter 150E. And um, and then if we hire uh any nurses into the bargain unit, we, they would be covered under the collective bargaining agreement, whether they were a member of the union or not.
Before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge Tim Allen, who's here on the city council. And we also have Caterie Walsh, hi Caterie.
Hi Brian, I just want to say that I'm in favor of moving this forward positively to the council.
Thank you, okay, thank you, council.
Thank you, and Victor Davola, hi Victor. And uh, so who negotiated this?
Thank you.
Who represented the nurses?
Attorney Marshal Moriarty was their, was their representative.
Okay.
And of course, he doesn't have anyone that he represents now in the bargaining, because there is no one. Um, so he would probably be in kind of a very awkward position as far as making any kind of representation, as far as what the, what the bargaining unit would.
Now, the, is one of the reasons why there's nobody in these positions at the salary?
Uh, I, I think it's a combination, council, between um residency, salary, um, the nature of work, what you can make as a nurse in a hospital setting. The upside to this position is that it's Monday through Friday, it's daytime. Uh, you know, you're, you're not working overnights in a hospital, you're not working in an emergency room. Um, you know, there's, there's some pretty positives to it. I will say that when we look at what the salary is comparable to other nurses in this field, we're right on par. Uh, what I do is I go, I look at what we're, what MMA is, uh, has posted for jobs statewide, for uh either regional or public health nurses, and we're right there.
Now, how about comparing it to like Worcester?
Um, I haven't looked at Worcester specifically, I've just looked at the number, a number of positions that were on the MMO.
I actually, if I could interrupt, I called Worcester actually, and they are, their salary range is eighty-five thousand on the low end and a hundred thousand on the high end, and they have four nurses, and they're looking to hire. Uh, well, they have three nurses currently, they're looking to hire a fourth. So we're about fifteen thousand, uh, we're about seventy, and Worcester's about eight, if Worcester's eighty-five, we're about fifteen thousand under them.
We'd be about seventy-one, plus another couple thousand on the bachelor's degrees, we'd be around seventy-three, seventy.
So we wouldn't be comparable with Worcester.
We, we usually don't compare ourselves to Worcester. That, that's not a, that's not a comparable that we use in labor relations.
But we're not comparable to Worcester.
No, we're not, but I'm just saying, we, we don't use the, we don't use Boston, Worcester, Wellesley, West, we don't use anything.
What cities do we use?
We use Northampton, Westfield, West Springfield, Holyoke, Chickapie, those are the cities.
Does that make sense with a population of a hundred fifty thousand? It does?
It does, it's, it's just different, in our view, it's a different market. Uh, and I, and I say this from going to interest arbitration with the unions. These would be the comparables that we, that we bring in. Yeah, I'm gonna say some of the unions will bring in Quincy and uh, you know, other, trying to be the other one next to Quincy. One of the other ones next, next door to Quincy. Um, you know, they'll bring in Eastern Mass.
And so I, just, just on that point, how does, how does Springfield compare to like Northampton or West Springfield? Do they, I mean, in terms of uh English-speaking population, senior citizen, what's the comparables?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that, for English-speaking population, I don't have, I don't have anything on that.
But wouldn't that be a factor of what we're looking for in a, in a school?
Not, not as far as attracting a nurse, I don't think so.
No?
We're not looking, we're not asking for bilingual nurses to come into the city.
Oh, come on, why not?
We just haven't made that a requirement of the job.
I think it should be, actually, because I think we have a significant non-English speaking population and outreach, uh, whether it be COVID or influenza, or we've seen in the papers measles. I think uh the ability to be bilingual would be an essential part of the job.
Well, it'd be essential, it'd certainly be uh, it'd certainly be a benefit. But you know, our police officers don't have to be bilingual.
No, I think if it's essential, if you're speaking with a non-English, uh, this is my own opinion, and a medical uh background, but I think if you're speaking to a uh non-English uh speaking uh population or residents, I think it's, when we're talking public health, I think it would be essential. So that would be my, just input, and that's it, yeah.
Um, Helen, did you mention that you were in need of a nurse for tuberculosis?
I am totally confused why this contract was sent to committee. I am here to answer the questions that you might have about nursing and nursing in the city of Springfield. Currently, I am behind a month because this was sent to committee. I have a huge tuberculosis case of communicable diseases. I have um individuals in our system, in our healthcare, in our homeless system, who are in need of services. What this contract does, that the last one did not do, allows me to hire part-time nurses. That to me is critical. It's critical because there may be nurses who are retired, there may be nurses who are currently working full-time in other venues who are willing to come to the city for part-time work. That would be a huge benefit to us. And so this contract that was negotiated, and there was a nurse at the table at the time, Zeta Woods, had not retired yet or had not transitioned, so she worked through the entire process with um Bill Mahoney, Marshal Moriarty, and we came to this point of, of, of agreeing on a contract. Zeta Woods then left, leaving no nurses in that bargaining unit. And so um I am here to answer the questions on that. I pulled up the minutes from your city council meeting, and so I'm here to answer the questions that were caught, were.
So I made the motion to put it to committee.
I see that.
And I, the, the reason why I put it into committee is usually whether it's any matter, but certainly one important is union bargaining. As a counselor, or at least as this counselor, wants to hear from the other side before we vote on any uh contract, on why we should uh vote for it. And not having this unique situation, not having any nurses, we didn't have, and you weren't in the chamber that night, so we didn't have the opportunity to speak with you. So that's the reason why we sent it to committee. And my thought process was, and tell me if I'm wrong or where my flaw in my logic is, if we were to ratify, and if you can give me some clarification, we, we were voting on the contract itself or funding the contract. It's not the contract.
We're voting funding the contract.
Funding the contract.
Already been negotiated.
Yeah, it's already, we, we don't, we don't sign the contract, it's funding the contract. So if we're ratifying uh seventy thousand dollar wages for the next three years, and we're not attracting nurses now, and Worcester's paying eighty-five thousand dollars, why are we ratifying a contract that's underpaid? And how are we gonna attract for, you know, further nurses? And the second question we had, or I had, uh, you know, I think there was a thought process that we're gonna supplement the public health nurse with school nurses. And the school, the school nurses, is that the same type of training that a public health nurse would have? It's a different population, students versus seniors, um, you know, administering shots or uh flu clinics or whatnot. So those were the questions that we had. So I, I think it was a valid point, I mean, it's not, it's kind of unique not to have somebody, unless it's not. I mean, have you ever negotiated a contract or ratified whether there was no non-bargaining members of the union? And what was that union?
It's unique.
Yeah, that's my point, so I don't think it was, I don't think it's a, 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 uh, unreasonable to send it to committee when there is no members of the other, of, of the bargaining unit, and especially since it's my belief that the bargaining unit is underpaid, and you're not really gonna attract individuals to this position unless we are comparable to a city like Worcester. Uh, I have a question, and that would be for Bill. Without it being ratified, the contract, what is, is, is there anything to stop the city from just hiring, so there's no contract? Why, why can't the city, the city can't just go out forward and, and hire a nurse right now?
The, the, under the current language of the, you know, like backup, can we hire a nurse right now? Yes.
Then why don't we do it? Without it, without a contract? It's not, it's not ratified, the city council hasn't ratified it.
Your question is, can we hire nurses now without having a ratified contract? Yeah, it would be subject to the terms of the old contract.
Okay, lesser money.
It would be a lower rate of pay, that's what we'd be advertising that, that's what we'd be selecting.
Can we hire outside the, the, the union uh bargaining unit? So if we are, could we hire a nurse more than the old contract, you know, and they're non-union?
No.
We can't? Okay.
Not if, not if it's a position that's covered under this bargain. You could hire more supervisors, which you can hire a supervisor, they're not subject to the terms of the, of the collective bargaining agreement, so we can, you know, we've hired certainly because of that. Uh, but to hire into the bargain unit, you have to pay whatever the wages are on the bargain.
Uh, I see your hand up, Caterie.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, um, I wasn't aware that when this went to committee that it was gonna create a, a difficulty for, for um the nurses and for Helen. But Helen, I would think that some people want to work part-time, is that your experience?
That's what we know right now, that we have had individuals who have expressed interest, but until, uh, we are in a public health crisis, and I will say this at the city council meeting, to have this go-to committee really undermines the work that my department needs to do. I understand the salary issue, uh, Counselor Walsh, we've been dealing with that for a number of years. In twenty-five years of doing this work, I've never had the nursing contract go to committee. Because most people recognize, we just came out of a pandemic, the communicable disease rate in the city of Springfield, not to have nurses, um, really is creating a crisis for this city and its residents. Now, you ask a question, um, I know that in this contract, we are able to hire part-time nurses, which would be critical, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I, I, it's my experience that people know, people like to work part-time, maybe they have other things they're doing. So I, I think it's of the essence that we do move this forward.
Uh, Victor or Tim, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
How about Victor?
Uh, I do, uh, thank you, I'm Mr. Chair. Uh, good afternoon to all. Um, I just wanna follow with Counselor Kern, let's just bring it up, bringing up regarding the uh, the other language speaking nurses. I'm not gonna say only Spanish-speaking nurses, but uh, so it's not a requirement right now, is that correct, Bill?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and I think Counselor Kern might have asked that, but why?
Well, first of all, I guess there's a, I guess I would say back to um, to you and to Counselor Kern, it's gonna make it even more difficult to attract nurses if we add this layer to it. And it's gonna make it.
But why do you, I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but explain your logic to me, why will it make it more difficult?
Because we wouldn't, we don't have, you're narrowing the pool that you can select from. If you say someone has to be bilingual, and they have to live in the city, and they're gonna, you know, we're gonna, and they're gonna do this type of work rather than something else, it's gonna be just a narrower pool of people. Because not everyone is bilingual, okay? Most people are not bilingual.
Right, but when I walk to the uh local hospitals, the amount of other lan, or, I'm gonna say Spanish-speaking, but don't forget, we also have Vietnamese, the police, we've got an array of other communic, uh, wonderful communities in the city. The supply is there. Well, I'm not, I'm not following why, why is it that we're not?
I, I think maybe, Counselor, what we can do is maybe we can put in the language, it would be beneficial or helpful if you were bilingual, not making it mandatory, but making it, is that possible to do, Bill?
How do we know that these nurses aren't bilingual? I mean, I, I'm sure when you have to look at the pool of people that are in nursing schools today, you're gonna find applicants that are bilingual without having to ask for it.
Uh, that is correct, however, uh, what I'm asking is, uh, first of all, I don't see the logic right now, Bill, and I know I got interrupted, but uh, Bill, please, I, were you gonna finish something else about specifically the language requirement?
No, we, we don't have a specific language requirement for this position. Um, and certainly, we don't, we're not opposed to having someone that is bilingual, we think that would be great. But at this point, we need to stabilize the operation, and we need to bring in nurses. And if they're bilingual, that's fantastic, whether they're bilingual in English and Spanish, or English and Vietnamese, or whatever.
Yeah.
It'd be wonderful. But we don't necessarily have that skill set, if we, if someone applies and they have it, that's the better for.
Do we have, do we have language to follow with Counselor Santinella was saying? Uh, Spanish, Vietnamese strongly preferred?
No, we don't have that.
Why? I know I've seen job positions out there that say strongly preferred.
We, we don't, we don't have that, um, and um, we have not negotiated that into any of our, into our job descriptions with the unions. Um, and quite frankly, there's no one for me to negotiate with right now on that.
I, the reason I keep hoping, uh, hoping on this issue is because I just heard the commissioner, I can't see her, but good to see your commissioner, uh, saying that we have a crisis, that uh this action is denying, denying our um, the, uh, the, the department's ability to hire people. But we, on this side of the talk, and we still gotta do our due diligence, and that's, it might, what I see, that's what we do here, doing our due diligence. Uh, it's our responsibility, some people might not like it, but that's the way it is. We are not just rubber stamps, at least I don't think we are. And so we're doing our due diligence, some people might not like it, but it is what it is. And I just, Bill, I, I, this is gonna come up again, I, I, I am a little disturbed that that's not, or language that says uh strongly preferred, I know that the job openers out there say so. Uh, and the supply is there because these eyes have seen it constantly, so um, it would just, I don't know, I, I, I. I'm a little, I'm a little disturbed by this. Commissioner, uh, those are my words for now, Mr. Uh.
Commissioner Carlton? Commissioner Carlton would like to respond to what you're saying.
Sure. I'm a little disturbed as well, but let me say that the, a good majority of the patients that my staff is dealing with right now are from Somalia. And so we have um individuals who do, who are not Spanish-speaking, but speak another language. And so I'm happy to acknowledge that we do not have all languages covered. We do have language line, we do have language line, so that our staff is able to tap into whatever language uh they need in order to complete a physical assessment with the patient. And so that is there. I am constantly in recruitment at AIC, STCC, and the ALMS around nurses as they graduate, and absolutely would love to have bilingual nurses, but that's not where we are right now. Where I am is I have no nurses, and I have a public health crisis. And what I need is bodies in those positions. You ask about Springfield Public School nurses, and so we, yes, worked out a contract with them. We are training them on the Maven system, which is the DPH portal system that attracts infectious diseases. We're training them, we are paying them significantly more than we pay um our nursing supervisor even, just to help us during this period. I just think, in my opinion, and I will say it at the city council meeting, that I do not understand, I get all of the conversations that are happening, but what this city needs is to take care of its residents, and it needs public health nurses, part-time and or full-time.
Yes, sir. Uh, Helen, could, um, just in terms of the compensation part of it, um, is it possible that we could, in whatever we have left, if there's a callback, have used or utilized, or can we use ARPA funds, supplement a nursing salary on this?
No, no.
You can't?
No, this is, this is a negotiated contract. You can't, you can't, you can't latently change the rates of pay.
No, 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 it's not in the contract, but could we have negotiated that in, or could the Nurses Union have negotiated it?
Uh, I don't know, I don't believe ARPA could have been, because it's gonna be for a.
Public health.
I know, but it's gonna be, I believe though it's gonna be for recurring expense. So although I'm not an expert on that, you can talk with finance on that.
So ARPA couldn't be used for.
I don't think it could be, I, I don't even know if there's an ARPA fund available.
So.
That's really a finance question.
Okay, so I, I will ask that. And secondly, and this is a legal question, so we don't have any, uh, they're, on the, the bargaining unit, that, those individuals not here. Uh, there is no supervisor, they've resigned.
No, there is a supervisor.
They're.
But they're not in the bargain.
Okay, so the, the individuals who executed the bargain contract are no longer with the city?
Correct.
Is that, is that a valid, just this is a legal question.
Zeta Woods.
They're, they're, they're no longer here.
Zeta Woods.
The individual who executed the contract.
Right, Zeta Woods. I'm sorry, Zeta.
Okay. So is that a binding contract, even though they're not here, no longer with the?
It's only binding if the city council ratifies the contract.
So, okay, so that's what I did not, okay, that's.
So once the city council, assuming that you ratify the contract, then it's a binding contract.
And that's why you need the vote?
Yeah.
So if, but if, if she, if she was still here, you wouldn't need the vote?
No, it's only the vote, all contracts are.
No, but that's my point, she's not, if she's not here.
Right.
Is it still a contract?
Yeah.
It is?
Because it's been ratified by one party, and now I have to read the other.
Even though that party's no longer with the city?
Yeah, I ditched the GLR.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean other people who qualify wouldn't be, wouldn't be bound by the same contract.
So to Caterie's, to Counselor Walsh's point, if we hire somebody, they're gonna be bound by the terms of the contract as we negotiate.
Okay, and the third point that you stated earlier is, if we were to hire, and if it wasn't, we, we didn't ratify the contract, we can only, we're, we are mandated, there's no other way, we have to go back to the old rates, there's no other, we can't hire non-union nurses at a higher rate?
We would hire, we would hire at the rates of the current collective bargaining agreement, that's what we would hire at.
Even if they're non-union?
They would, no, they'd be in a bargaining unit, they may not be in a union, but they'd be in the bargaining unit.
So we couldn't go to Bay State and get a nurse and hire him at, let's say, a hundred grand?
Not for that job, no, not, not for a public health nurse job covered by the recognition clause in that collective bargaining.
But if it was, there, there's no other way, there's no way to get her on that at all?
No.
No, that's the question.
There is, as, as far as I know, there is no way of getting around Chapter 158.
They have to be, okay, they have to be union.
They would be in the bargaining unit, they don't have to be in the union, but they'd be in the bargain.
Even though the contract's expired?
If it's expired, we still work under the old contract, and what would happen is, Counselor, I think we were going with your question is, we would then negotiate a new terms of the collective bargaining with a new person or persons that we hire that are in that bargain.
So the hope is to ratify this contract at seventy, and then to hire people at the new pay grade?
The hope is to hire somebody whether at the existing rate now or a ratified rate, the council takes it up. I don't anticipate, if, if this is going on your next agenda, I would anticipate that whoever we hire is gonna be at the new rate.
But now, if we don't attract candidates at the new rate, what would be the solution? Because we're left in for three.
That's why we changed the language in the contract to allow for part-time employees, and we've been in a cadre of non-bargaining, non-bargaining cut, uh, part-time employees.
And how, when did Zeta resign?
January of twenty-five, I believe.
Okay.
I think that was.
So it's January, February, March, okay. All right, so we've been out of nurse for three months, okay.
And, and she's in desperate need.
Right.
Sure.
So we did two things, we hired a supervisor of nurses, and we hired, and we worked with the school department on providing services.
So who were you in, like the flu clinics and stuff like that this year?
We, we did, so we had nurses at that time, there were two nurses in the unit, um, um, I'm forgetting her name. She left, Lisa, I believe her name was, um, so we had two nurses in the unit, plus a, a union servant, supervisor. They did the flu clinics, they did the immunizations, they worked very hard in order to make sure we were protecting our residents. Um, the one nurse left, um, and then Zeta left, so that left no one in the union. The nursing supervisor actually came back, she had taken a position at Bay State, but Dominique Taylor felt so strongly about working with the department and the residents, she came back. She's in nurse practitioner school as well, so she's there. And we have um helped to get her to a place where she can supervise the Springfield School nurses who are committed to helping us.
And since we don't have any union members here, uh, you would be the expert in this. I mean, do you feel like seventy thousand is adequate to attract a quality candidate? Uh, or will we get, or should it be, I mean, I mean, my ten cents, and it's easy for my, where I'm sitting, is we should be on par with Worcester, uh, and I think eighty-five would make us there, uh, get us there. But could, will we get a nurse at seven, like what's your, your experience?
That's the question. I agree with you that seventy-one thousand, we have always thought that our nurses were underpaid. So that is not new, this has been going on, in my opinion, for at least the last ten years or so, where we looked at, you know, pub, but if we look at public health nurses around us, it is comparable to them. Worcester, I don't know about, but I don't disagree, that I would love to be able to pay our nurses more. Remember, we had a nurse at that table who bargained with um Marshal Moriarty, Bill Mahoney.
Yeah.
Their voices were heard, and her voice was the one who agreed to the salary. So that's where we are, and again, I just think we're in a very unique position.
No, we are, and, and the idea is to get nurses, and uh, so, but to expedite it at seventy, really what we're looking to do is give you the ability to hire a nurse outside the union bargaining unit. Because that's where, if we, if we don't get a nurse at seventy, that's kind of where, that's the route we're gonna have to go, am I correct?
The part-time nurses would be of value, they will not be in the bargaining unit, is that correct, Bill?
So they'd be non-union?
They would be non-union, so that is, to me, becomes a, a real staple for this contract and for the department.
And because they're non-union, are they bound to the, the previous contract?
No.
So they could be more than the previous contract's wages?
Be whatever we decide, whatever we.
That's my point, all right, so we hire non-union nurses, we can hire more than, we can give them a higher rate than the seventy thousand dollars?
Well, we're not gonna, at part-time, we're not gonna give them more than seventy-five.
No, I know, it would be, but hourly?
Hourly rate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, so we can go past the original contract if they're non-union. So basically, we're ratifying a union contract so we can hire non-union uh labor?
I, I know, I wouldn't agree with that, we're gonna continue to try to hire.
We're not gonna be able to do it, though, it's happening.
I think we are, it's just gonna take us some time, and it's gonna be, and I know you keep saying seventy, Council, but it's probably more like seventy-four when we back from the bachelor's degree, because they're gonna get sixty dollars to wait for the bachelor's degree, that's three thousand dollars plus on top of the seventy-one that we're gonna be at, so it's about seventy-four thousand.
If, what was the number of nurses, the highest we ever had here?
Uh, it was eight when I began in this position, it was um lower to four. We bargained with Springfield Public Schools to have our nurses go to Springfield Public Schools. So that union separated, and so what we were left with was the four nurses uh to be able to take care of essential functions for the department.
So we were eight to, to zero, now what? I mean, is salary, the, the, what, what does the, what precipitated this decline, and then from ten?
I think well, it was retirement, Helen, would you agree?
Yeah, it was definitely retirement, um, individuals moving, we had.
But was it paid? I mean, where, where's that coming?
It wasn't paid initially, we had the same nurses in that union for um at least, I wanna say ten years or so before. It may have been even more than that. So the attrition around nurses aging and just retiring or transitioning, that was a part of why we lost um the nurses who had been with us for a very long time.
And this, uh, this contract is, the tenure is three years or four?
Four, this is four.
Four. I mean, I guess that. I mean, I guess that's, that's the situ- I mean, if there's a sticking point, it's this. We're gonna ratify a contract at seventy thousand dollars, when again, Worcester is eighty-five thousand. So if the whole point is to attract nurses, we're not gonna be able to attract nurses. However, comma, we can if we go outside the bargaining unit and and attract part-time nurses at a higher rate that are non-union. Oh, I, I'd catch it, uh, but, uh, that's kind of what I'm gaining from this hearing, but.
If I may, I have two nurses, one from Elms, one from AIC, who are just graduating, who are excited about the potential of coming to work for the city of Springfield at the seventy-one thousand. So, um, I don't know what we're going to attract, Counselor Kern. But until we are able to ratify the contract and post for the positions, then we'll have the answer. Right now, I don't have the answer. Right now, what I know is there is a public health crisis in my department and in this city. And if communicable diseases become spread, then that means that I'm putting the entire, um, public.
At risk.
In the city.
Right.
And I'm not willing to do that.
I I don't disagree with that. Uh, I mean, and we appreciate the communication, uh, of that. And not having nurses since January, February, March, I would agree, it's time to hire some.
Um, Cateri, would you like to make a motion to bring this back with a favorable vote? And we have all three members of the committee here to take that vote?
I I, I definitely want to make a motion. Not only do I want the community to save, but I don't want Helen to be mad at me.
I second that.
I'm going on the campaign trail, Counselor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, uh, this will be reported back favorably. And I will say, thank you for attending, Victor and Hel- uh, Cateri.
Yeah, thank you. And if I, if I just, go ahead, Counselor Walsh.
I, I don't, I think you will have people applying.
I do.
I really do. I mean, a lot of people go into the nursing profession to help.
To know.
You know, sometimes it is, they're not driven by salary.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, if you allow me, I just want to compliment Counselor Kern for doing his due diligence.
Yeah.
And I'm glad that we're moving this forward, uh, we're doing the diligence, uh, even if people are mad at us, that's, that's the price we pay, well, so. We have a function to do, or we are doing that function. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me be clear. I'm not mad, I'm not angry, I don't get that. What I am is a professional. And as a professional, my job is to protect the health of the residents of the city of Springfield, and that's what I'm doing. So I look forward to seeing you on April seventh. Thank you.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, uh, hey.
Yes.
Commissioner, like I was, you were so lovely. I did not want to mention your name. You took it up on yourself to do, uh, which I'm disappointed. I will definitely see you on April seventh. I I don't shy away from it. Uh, but, you know, if you, uh, you know, since you brought it up.
He was talking about the council and general, Victor, not you. He wasn't singling you out.
Counselor, definitely, you took that personally. I did not mention your name.
No, but if I may, if I may, you were responding to my comment. I just, I just, I just want to, to respond to my comment, uh, and just to be clear.
Yeah.
And so, uh, but, uh, she did say I will see you on April seventh, so I will see you on April seventh as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna say all of us. That's what she meant.
I didn't.
I just want to be clear. I just want to absolutely please be clear of where we are.
Yeah.
But to my other point, good job, Counselor Kern.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cateri. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone.